Sorry for all that technical.
Welcome, Mr. Flora. All right, we're ready for your exciting presentation. You need elevated music or anything?
I get it to go backwards. There we go. Okay. All right, technical issues. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Council members. I am Tim Flora. I'm your Director of Finance. I sort of feel like I am the opening act for a pretty big budget event today. And more importantly, I sort of feel like I'm the warm-up act for the conference class presentation which comes after me. So today, we are going to talk about the general obligation bond referendum. And so if you remember, we presented at the Budget Retreat on March 1st, some potential projects for a proposed Geo General Obligation Bonds referendum. And so since then, we've had the opportunity to go back and sort of refine our numbers, gather additional information, and come up with a presentation for you all of sort of what we deem as something that would be very appropriate for a Geo referendum. And part of that discussion today is to gauge your interest, if that is what you want to do. Because if that is your interest, then we need to jump on it pretty quickly as we would need to introduce something at the May 20th council meeting in order to get the ball rolling. So. So what is a general obligation bond referendum? So as we stated at the Budget Retreat, it is sort of the primary source of funding for many infrastructure projects. So the big capital items, the very costly projects. Geo bonds really are the most common funding source that we use for those types of projects, particularly because those are using the least expensive debt we have because we are a AAA rated agency. And so we get.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, yeah. So, so general obligation bonds are the primary source.
The credit rating part.
Yes, the credit rating part is we are a AAA rated credit. We have a AAA credit rating on our general obligation bonds. And so that means that we get the most, the lowest interest rates on the debt we issue for that debt. And so, and that is because that debt is secured by the full faith and credit of the city's taxing authority. So that is our ability to secure that debt by the ability to impose tax revenue applied towards that. I will also point out that, you know, you cannot use operating funds for any capital purchase. And so it really is for capital. And so if there's any associated capital with running or operating costs associated with that capital, that is something that would have to be addressed through an operating budget. So each referendum requires separate bond orders. And so at the presentation we made to you before, we sort of gave you one big number. And in this presentation, after talking with our bond council, really what we do is we break it up into two different orders that we would present to the voters. And so based upon our assessments, the projects, we sort of break it up into two different bond orders. In this situation, that would be for parks would be one bond order and the other bond order would be streets and sidewalks. And so I will point out, Councilmember Cook, I'm so sorry, one of the things I did not reference in any presentation in the staff memo or in the presentation was the general statute that applies to this. It is the Local Government Bond Act, and it is the North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 159, Article 4. So there are very specific guidelines and rules and laws that we use in order for this process. And so everything that I'm talking about today is certainly consistent with that law. So what I'm, what you see here, these are the projects that we presented to you at the May 1 Budget Retreat, Council Retreat, or March 1, I'm sorry, the March 1 Council Retreat. And so that price tag was $610 million. You'll notice that there's four categories there, sidewalks. And I will point out that the sidewalks in that presentation were the new sidewalks projects, and then carbon neutral, neutral sustainability projects, the parks, and then the convention center. What we have refined into the two bond orders is somewhat different. The first is the bond order one, which is the Parks and Recreation Splash and Pay Project. So that's the two projects, park projects that were presented at the Budget Retreat, the former Wills Fun Park, and then the other was the East End Long Meadows Park, the Austin Avenue Park Facilities. So that is a total of $85 million. And then different for bond order two, for the streets and sidewalk, you'll see the first item there is the new sidewalk projects. That's $60 million. But because of the parameters that we were looking at and the scope of what we're trying to do as far as. So one of the things for Geo bond referendum is you really want to, it's improving the quality of life for your residents. And so we thought by adding not only the new projects, the new sidewalk projects, which is very specific areas, but also we would supplement the funding that we have for the street paving and maintenance and supplement some of the sidewalk repairs payment because it addresses, you know, potholes and sidewalk repairs across across the total city. And so that we added that. And then as well, I think back in 2019, there was the unpaved roads project, which we have been funding every year for, I think, the last couple of years, it's been $1.2 million. I think, I think at the time when that passed, I think council was looking to get all of our unpaved roads completed in a T-year timeframe. We thought the unpaved roads project, $10 million of funding for that in this would also sort of serve well because those imporades are throughout, throughout the city. And so all this surely is doing is we would be moving it to this sort of funding, which is sort of what I would consider the less expensive funding and then free up capacity in our regular CIP process. So what I'm going to do is, so this is the high overview we have. I do have in the presentation sort of more specifics on each of the different projects we've talked about. A lot of this is information that you've already seen at the Budget Retreat. I won't spend a lot of time on it. But if there are specific questions about the projects, I do have the departments here that put together that information here to answer specific projects. But so on a very high level, though, the former Wills Fun Park, which would include the large outdoor aquatic center and preserve the Wills Fun indoor skating rink, which all that is complete. But all of the park areas surrounding that, that project was $43 million. The East End Long Meadow Pool Parks that we're projecting, and when I say, when I'm giving you these costs, that is the cost of design as well as construction. So those are, that's the total. Hopefully, that is the not to exceed cost of those projects. But at this point, those are our best guess numbers. And that would be the Central Community Plaza retained existing, the athletic courts and fields, as well as a potential pool at the East End Park. So those two projects are bond order one, moving to bond order two, the streets and sidewalks. So these are the new sidewalk projects. What we did is we just took 11 of the most project-ready projects that were there to fund those. You're looking at, you know, 25 unique sidewalk corridors and gaps. Gaps, we're looking at like 12.4 miles worth of sidewalks. This is in addition to additional funding that we already have. We already have, I think, $38.6 million of federal funding that goes with that. And current funding that we already have at current funding levels is $12.4 million. This is just a list of those projects. You'll note that I've got it capped at $60 million. I think the estimated from the department was like $62 million, but those are escalation costs. If those, if it goes over that, we certainly have other revenue streams that we could make up. But we thought the $60 million was a good number. The sidewalk and repairs and the street paving and maintenance, again, really the number we have for that, that is 50% of the next three years of CIP funding that we have programmed in. And so we just really are pulling, pulling that out to supplement the funding that we have. Really, that is just really to help free up capacity for the ever-increasing CIP request that we have. We're getting to the point with escalation costs and our growth and the number of projects. What we currently have in our CIP, it's hard to cover all of those projects. In fact, I think what we are still going through, if I'm not mistaken, it's something like we have 85 projects in the CIP list right now. Right now, we are looking at only being able to fund just a partial, I think, about 50, 50 projects of that. So really with a Geo bond referendum, what it does is it just frees up capacity in our regular CIP process. So we can, we can get those funded. And so this is just partial funding. I just want to make sure I was clear about that. This is just partial funding of current funding that we're already doing. And then here's the unpaved road project, which is, which is new, which was not mentioned in the other. Again, it's just a matter of this, this project fit nicely into a Geo referendum packet. And just in the fact that we're, we're still shy, I think, we still have about 13 miles of unpaved roads that we like, we would like to get paved. And this $10 million, while it may not cover the entire cost of getting all these roads paved, it would be a bigger chunk and get us closer to obtaining that goal. So the part I like now is the financial impact. And so it does have an impact. And what we're looking at doing is this would be a $200 million referendum. If passed, we would issue that in two tranches. We don't need all that money in one big swoop. So we would split it up into, over the course of the next couple of years, we would, we would actually go out and issue the debt in two tranches. And so to do that, this is just sort of the debt schedule that you would see. And so the average annual debt service would be to the tune of $14 million a year on that. That's just the average. I think you'll see it peaks at $20 million in one year. And so that, but I do want to point out that this is what you're seeing here is based upon a 20-year payback schedule, which is, which is standard, level principal payments, but at an interest rate of 5.34%. And that is, that 5.3% is only here for illustrative purposes because the General Assembly changed the way reporting requires are. And so we have to report the interest rate at the highest interest rate, I think, of any Geo issuance. And so our rate is more like, I think, would be more like 3.6% interest. So, and that is the, the positive of having a AAA credit rating is there are some governments out there that are paying 5.34% because of our AAA credit rating. We are anticipating it being at 5.34%. Nonetheless, that is a big debt service impact with the average being 14.2 million. And again, the highest would be $20, $20 million. This is just a revision of a chart that we showed you at the Budget Retreat. What it shows is, in the blue, is our existing debt service. And so you can see 31 million dollars this year. And it goes up next year and then starts to decline as we, as we pay off that debt. The yellow is the debt service that is anticipated for the $95 million housing bond, Geo bond that we've got. We are issuing our first round of debt currently. It's in process. We hope to close on it in the next month or so. And so there will be that debt service layered in. And then what you see in the red would be the additional debt service that would result from the $200 million bond referendum we have here that I'm talking about today. So financial impact and talking about the tax rate implications. And so what this schedule sort of shows you is what is that impact on the tax rate? And so the average tax rate, if you average all of it, is 2.51%. But the immediate impact on tax rate would be 3.45 cents on the tax rate. And that would impact in FY '26. Really no way to sugarcoat that. That is, and again, this would be at its highest because this is based upon that 5.34% interest. We do anticipate, fully anticipate it being lower, but you are in the ballpark with, with these numbers. And so really how we, how you see that declining, because we make level principal payments. So the level principal payments are not like a house mortgage where you're making a level debt payment. How we work our debt, over the 20 years, you make a level principal payment, which then means your interest rate, your interest cost decrease over a period of time because you're paying more of that principal upfront. But the goal in this schedule really is, you're looking at that far right column to see, you don't want that column to go negative because you want to make sure that we have enough revenue to pay for our debt service. And but as you, as you see, as you go down that second column, the property tax rate, you can see over time, we, in reality, we could decrease that tax rate impact as we are paying down the debt. So this is where it gets us to. And I do want to sort of back up just a little bit in saying, you know, there were, we pulled out the sustainability projects. We pulled out the convention center. That was not a value judgment on my part. That really is just a matter of project readiness. And what we put together really were those projects that we could start funding sort of immediately and were most appropriate to fit what we were trying to accomplish. Sustainability projects are not a specific project outlined by the general statute. It's not that we couldn't do them. It just, it would just involve a whole lot more work as we had to tie them to other projects that were. And so, so again, no value judgment on what, how we got to the projects we got to, other than the fact that those were the most appropriate for this funding strategy. So now, funding options, and this is where we really need your input. It's, you know, we could do the referendum as proposed, or we could do it with changes. We could not do a referendum. That's certainly an option. It will just impact how we work our CIP projects. And so there may be some that might could be delayed or even not funded at all. We could put the referendum in a future year. That is certainly an option. The only threat we run with that is just with the ever-increasing escalation cost. You know, projects are not going to get any less expensive. I mean, I just do not see they're, they're going, so if we delay it, you always have the threat that next time I come back, these same projects, it's going to be at a higher, at a higher number. Or no referendum at all, and we could continue to work through our CIP process. And we could show you what that cost through the CIP process is in order to get more projects funded. We really kind of get to the same end result, though, is it probably, most likely would require a tax rate increase. And so with that, we can leave it here. I think my next slide really is just more, what would you like, how would you like us to move forward? What, what answers, what answers to your questions can we provide? Where can I clarify any information? All right, Ali?
It seems like the equity, the green and the sustainability have all been removed.
So no, that would, so I really was trying to just stay focused on the funding piece altogether. I think there is an equity component to almost every project that we have. And that has worked through. And one of the things that I guess I could have highlighted a little bit more was like for the new sidewalks and the road pavement, those ranked highest in the CIP process. Those were two of the top three projects that had the highest equity score. And so, so everything that is in this project, I think, addresses any equity and many green aspects of what we're doing. It just, I was very, just very specific to the financing piece of it.
I hear that. I appreciate it. I think what I'm most concerned about, and it's mainly just even coming from the presentation yesterday, the way that things are going right now with construction being the jobs that get created and only construction. Essentially, what happens is the people who do the construction end up being moved out of the community. And so as folks continue to be priced out of our community, and we're not, I mean, if we're not going to create anything that essentially creates more jobs moving forward beyond the construction, which is the roads, streets. I mean, I'd like to think that Parks and Recs, you know, 365 days a year, that would create a whole lot of jobs, but I don't think so. And I'm disappointed, I should say. And I'm, look to my colleagues, but yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate staff. I think that this is a great step. I think, you know, I think a lot of us probably got sticker shock at the Budget Retreat. We're like, I don't think we're ready for $610 million. And I didn't think y'all were promoting that. I just, you were trying to give us options. And so I think based on conversations of what are good fiscal policies around what we do with limited obligation bonds versus whatever, go bonds and Geo, thank you, general obligation bonds. You know, the, my understanding is that things that are able to be put forward as collateral, which is how we basically did the ballpark, Deepak, the police station, those were all limited, limited obligation bonds, which we can do internally, right? Those are not putting it in front of voters. So I think, having been on the council, we've had several conversations around infrastructure bonds and knowing, you know, our climate satisfaction survey, especially around roads and sidewalks, that consistently gets put as the, you know, there's lots of other things in there, but that, the entire time I've been on council, and I think before that, roads and sidewalks is always where we see some of our deepest resident dissatisfaction. And so to meet that need, I think it's going to take something like this and probably, as we've discussed, several rounds of this. So I am supportive. If you're looking for a thumbs up to move us forward, I am, you know, eager to hear from other colleagues, but definitely my thumb is up. And then with the park side, I think that those, those parks are transformative for our community. All three of those parks will be in areas that have historically not been invested in at the same level. We've heard from a lot of community members around pools specifically for many, many years. It is actually a public health crisis. We have a very high percentage of children who drown in our community because we don't have enough public pools. So I think that that plays out in many, many ways. We can have long conversations about why we have those numbers in Durham around public, public pools specifically. So I think it does actually address equity question because these are publicly held places, unlike many of our other features that we have done. Limited obligation bonds are, you have to pay to go see the baseball game. You have to pay to go see a show at Deepak. You don't have to go, you're not going to have to pay to use a pool. I mean, you're going to have a much lower cost to that. You're going to have a much lower cost to a lot of the amenities in the park. And that's something that I think is really, really important. So I am supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook?
That was, Councilmember Caballero actually touched on one of my questions, which are, of course, there's going to be continued costs after this 80, I'm looking specifically at the Parks and Recreation one, after the 85 million originally. Are we going to have, what are we looking already at? Like, would there be costs associated with using the, those recreational spaces? And what would that look like?
Yeah, there would, there would be programming cost, certainly with any new park and those, those types of facilities. And so those would just, you know, those discussions have been, you know, just with the department and the budget department. And so there would be those operating costs. And so those are being built in those forecasts. But it, but it would be absorbed through the, the operating budget process
in the future. Would any of that get passed on? Like, is there going to be a charge for accessing those spaces for community members? I'm assuming we don't have.
So I can answer that very briefly. In, you know, in public park and recreation, there's certainly many services that are free or open, and there are some that do have fees. As whenever we have a fee on anything, it comes to the Durham City Council in a fee ordinance. So all of our parks and recreation fees are really set and approved by, by the, by the council. And I would just also add that because we do have an interest in making sure there's access, we have basically sliding fee scales for much of the activity that goes on in park and recreation. But I know that as a new council member, you probably have not actually seen a fee ordinance. So the fee ordinance that we have in place is one that was approved by the council the last time. But it is, it is something that is a public, you know, decision.
And so that would automatically get it. We would definitely have a fee ordinance for these and their continued operating costs.
Any, anytime we have new, you know, new facilities or a new type of program that would cause a fee to, you know, be added, we would have to update our fee ordinances to ensure, given us the authority to charge fees. So that, that is one portion of it. What we typically do when we are building or investing in assets, we are estimating future costs for operations. And that is built, those costs are built into our, our annual operating budget. So the staff, the full-time staff, the part-time staff, our lifeguards, you know, every, every managers of facilities, everything that would be needed. You don't see it here, but it would be applicable in the years that any of those assets were coming online.
Perfect. Thank you. So, and then I have just one more very brief question, well, two. Councilmember Riss actually raised this in our March 1 meeting. And, and I'm just, now that he's put it in my head, it's, it's in my head when I'm looking at the designs, which is that like, it looks like a third to almost a half of the space is being used for parking. Have y'all discussed potentially consolidating that into a barrage stack situation? Sure. I think.
As far as the renderings of the park and then park law, you may recall that, that is just a rendering. So it may not be that exact footprint. See parking spaces. We haven't completed a stack parking ground.
Okay. I mean, I know they're rendering, but I also remember you talking specifically about how there was tons of feedback on like having a deep pool, for example, for older kids to play basketball and these things that I know are getting incorporated. So those things are going to stay, I'm assuming, but there's going to be room for, for other modifications outside of those ones? Okay, great. All right. Totally. Right, right, of course. And I heard you say that design is part of the fee. So I understand that the design part is yet to come. Okay. And then I just, just for funsies, will you, one more time, tell us how extensive it is to build a mile of sidewalk? Might be a, did he leave already? Oh, no, here he is. Just, just one more time, just for, just for all of us to hear it.
Sean Egan from Transportation again. So we see a range of costs and some of the costs that are in this presentation have increased about 15 to 20% as part of an additional review that we did. Right now, we need, we have the internal staff resources to deliver the current level of sidewalk projects. So for us to do additional property acquisition and for us to do additional project management on top of our existing city staff, we would need those costs to be included in the cost of the project. So the revised estimates are higher than what you saw in, on March 1st because they include the estimated cost for contracted services for property acquisition and contracted services for project management to deliver these projects. So if you do the math on it, it's up to $9 million per mile for the 12 miles that you see here. Some of that is because of the scale of the project. Some of these are very small gaps. Like the NC 54 is three tenths of a mile, but it's Like the NC fifty-four is three tenths of a mile, but it's over a million dollars. So the larger, the more we can address economies of scale, we're going to see better costs per mile. But we also are mindful of the impact that gaps in our network have. And we want to have a fully connected network in that NC fifty-four project, for example. That small wedge at a cost per mile is very high, but it gives us a complete and connected sidewalk network.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think those are all my questions that I'm just going to echo my council member who's just spoken. The, both of these projects have my full support. I'm up here talking a lot about affordable housing. Y'all know that I work in that all the time. But I do think that there is more to living in Durham than just surviving. And I want to make sure that we are also creating a Durham where people can thrive and have leisure time and, and enjoy their space. We have just moved up in our gardening zone for how hot it is. Global warming is not a question. It is hot out here and we really, really need public spaces where people can enjoy water and learn these really, really important skills such as swimming. Councilmember Caballero spoke to it, but though I'm sitting here talking about it as a leisure activity, it really is a survival need as well. We have many, many, many more kids of color dying in swimming and drowning accidents than percentage across the city. So there, there have to be opportunities for folks to learn how to interact and be around water, particularly as the climate continues to rise. And also we know that recreation spaces are vital for the community. So I am fully on board with that one. And I'm also going to echo those sentiments before even I've been on council for three months. I've gotten so many emails about sidewalks. And that is totally valid because we deserve also to have a place where people can walk down the street safely, access our awesome bus system and all of these different things. So my full support on both of these projects and thank you all so much.
Thank you for those comments. I totally agree. I graduated from NCCU. It was a requirement to learn how to swim. And that's what motivated me to get my instructor's license. So who knows, I might teach a class this summer. That'd be fun. Any other comments, Councilmember?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Councilmember Cook, for those comments. Appreciate that. I had two money questions and two sort of street sidewalk questions. So the, on the money question, so I understand how you, that you base the calculations on debt calculated at five point three four percent. That's what you have to do, I guess, by statute or whatever. But I'm sure you probably modeled this at some point for if we, assuming we have lower debt costs based on our AAA bond rating, how does that change that? I think you said the average rate over the debt term was like two point five.
I think you would see like the, 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 the high range, that twenty, the peak at twenty million dollars of debt service. I think that if I remember correctly, it comes down to like maybe more like sixteen or seventeen million dollars. And so there's, there's a considerable difference between the two.
If we, if we get lower.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm just, I'm showing that one peak here. I could, I, I'm more than happy to, to share the information. I don't have it, you know, at my fingertips, but it is, it is less interest cost.
And some curious, if you did calculate the, the average rate of the debt term, how does, because you, you showed them two dollars fifty-one cents over the, the term, right? How does it change that average cost?
So it, I, I don't know exactly, but it would, it would probably be more like closer to two, not two point five cents.
Yeah, so there we go. Yeah, appreciate that. Second question is, we, we've talked, we've been talking a lot. We talk a lot about over time now, cost increase, right? We just had this conversation about housing stuff. So, so what's the process? Either you were at the department level for budgeting, because I know we got the first tranche coming in one or a couple of years, another tranche a couple of years after that. So obviously this, over time, we're doing all this work. So what's the process been for estimating cost increase over time? Is it simply like estimating inflation or like, how do you, how do you calculate that? So, so that we don't come back four years from now and say like, oh, my gosh, we don't have enough money because we want to do this, but the costs have gone up. So how do we, how can we be assured that you're modeling to make sure cost increases are built into this whole model?
So for like the new sidewalk projects, we built in those numbers, we all noticed a noticeable increase from when we met in March to today. We built in those escalation prices into that model, hoping, assuming that we can get these done in, you know, a, a, a two to four, five-year time period. And so, so we estimated on the higher end, the, the parks, I'm not sure if you noticed, it was seventy-five million dollars in, at the retreat. We're now eighty-five million dollars. So we are factoring in a lot of that. And I mean, that's a pretty.
I'm pretty sure last year when we got the presentation initially from Parks and Recs, it was like fifty-five million. So.
Right. So, so I, I, I believe it's, it's a combination of adding a, a, a factor on there, working with the consultants, say, hey, what, what is, what do we think this is going to be? And you're right now, we're even, for the, the two parks, while you have the, the concept renderings, you don't actually have the, the designs, the, the actual design and, or the bidding of the project. And so, you know, there may have to be some value engineering that goes along. So it's hopeful that in this process, that what we are presenting today is the upper end to cover all of those costs.
I appreciate that. It's better, it's better to know on the front end to be, you know, clear about that than sort of later get sticker shock because it's going up. So I appreciate your work on that. So two questions about, or maybe kind of one just larger question about the, about the unpaved roads and the supplement of street paving. So I noticed under the unpaved roads, they were just talking about the roads. There's no other, there's no sidewalks. There's no other improvements. I'd love to see us, because we talk a lot about, wow, we have these roads and like, we gotta, now we gotta try to build sidewalks because we, you know. So is there not a way that we can build in, or what would it look like to build in sidewalks as well? So we're not in the same place again five years from now. Oh, we need sidewalks. We gotta do additional work. And like right away. So can, so can we do that? And I was, I know there's a cost, right?
But so there is a cost associated with that. That, I think there was an, if I'm not mistaken, and City Manager Page could probably help me with that. There was a study that was done, and I think the original intent was just, at that time, was just to pave the roads, not to provide any of the curbs. And, and that addition, certainly, anything and everything can be done. It all just comes at a cost. And this was, I think, the most cost-effective way to at least get them paved.
That was like, when you presented, it was like one hundred and nineteen billion dollars or something.
Someone may have presented that. It was not me.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, that, that was, we have enough street on roads to go from Durham to Dallas. I remember that.
So to answer your question back to two thousand.
Sorry. The direction was that we would go forward as a department and just pave all the roads, no other improvements. If the desire is to now change that, it will switch from just a paving project to actual full road construction project, which is going to be substantially more than what we gave to finance as far as estimates. And that will really vary depending on each street, depending on how much right of way we have, utilities that would need to be addressed, driveways, drainage. It, it's a much different type project with a much higher cost.
No, I understand. It just feels like, you know, it's sort of, we're just kicking that can down the road then. So, you know, in the future, we're like, hey, we don't have sidewalks. We need to build sidewalks. So I, so I, again, I understand there's limited costs, but that, I just wanted to raise that question. I'm like, yeah. So that's one. The other question I want to raise was, there's been a lot of talk about like what our standards are for building roads, right? And this is, I guess this is in the U D O. Is that where that is?
It's in the U D O, but it's also within our reference guide for development within Public Works. And we work with the Transportation Department as well with developing those standards for new road construction.
So, and what were the, what were the, like, what are the standard, what would those be for the new road construction? Is that?
Well, it depends on if it's a residential, commercial, so it somewhat varies depending on what type of development is happening around the new road. So I'm not sure I'm understanding your specific question as far as.
Yeah, no, no. And I'm kind of fumbling with this, but I know that we, we just talked earlier about, you know, narrow lane widths means like traffic calming, right? So like, what are we building? Wider roads? Are we building roads that are going to be more traffic calming? What are the, I guess the question is, what is, I mean, I guess you said that the standards we have, but I'm just, want to make sure that what we're building is building for the future, not sort of, you know.
Yeah. So, I mean, with a typical residential street, you'll have roughly twelve-foot wide lanes. You may have a two to four-foot wide shoulder in addition and sidewalk that's built anywhere from five feet to, I think in some cases now we're going with ten-foot wide multi-use pathways. So you can actually narrow that road just with some of the traffic calming measures that transportation has. That's pavement marking, striping, different things like that. Doesn't necessarily mean changing the width of the roadway itself, but.
But just change the configuration. Yeah. Yeah. So I guess I'm just hoping we have that complete streets sort of notion. They were utilizing that as we're building these new roads. That's, I guess, my request. Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Well, again, I, I think this is exciting stuff. I appreciate the work staff has done and look forward to this. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for all the work, staff. So until I, I was here in twenty nineteen. I remember discussion. I, I was a council member who said that, you know, there, there are cities in this country where you can literally go across the tracks and see the historic vestiges of, of disinvestment. So a lot of the conversation about paving the roads was about equity. And, and one of the things I remember saying was that, you know, one of the thresholds that in order to be truly considered a great metropolis, you have to cross two of the thresholds. One is you have to be accessible without a car. And two, in a city, every road should be paved at some point. So, so that was part of the impetus of, of, of that discussion, kind of bringing us up to, in light of historic inequities, to at least a baseline. Some of these areas where, where these roads are, they will be just roads. You know, folk were having problems traversing them with their cars. So, so I'm glad to see this in this project. With that said, I, I do, I want to do a little commercial about our AAA bond rating because some people think we're too protective of it. There's kind of poo-poo on that AAA bond rating. But, but the, the financial health of the city and strength of the city is the reason why we're in a position to do some of the other things we do without having to raise taxes, whether it's expanding heart or guaranteed income. You know, and to demystify our job, I always invite people, you know, to, to just think about how you run your own household. Think about what a good credit rating allows you to do for your own family. How it allows you to project your income beyond what it currently is when you have a good job history and a credit rating. So, so it's the same thing for the city. Think of the city as your house. The same rules that apply for your credit score apply for ours as well. And it allows us a lot more agility and power to do things. So I'm not debt averse, but when we talk about floating debt as a city, the checklist we go through, for example, if we talk about some of these projects being expedited, one of the questions I had is, how expedited? How many years are we moving forward on certain things as relative to what we would get just going to straight C I P? And how do we value those increased years? You know, if it's two years ahead of schedule or twelve years ahead of schedule, and how do we value that? So those are some of the questions that inform my decision on this, which I am supporting, by the way. I, I do want to, some of the framing and, and funding options, where it says no referendum will have impact on multiple C I P projects that will either be delayed or not funded. I, I'm, I'm struggling, I'm struggling a little bit with the framing because insofar as the C I P is aspirational and strategic, you know, there's always the opportunity for, you know, delay or not being funded. That's the case because it kind of reads like we knew we were going to do this bond and we, and we have to pass. It, it's almost framed like, you know, before we had this bond discussion, we didn't know we were going to have the bond discussion, but we still had a C I P. So I, I don't want to create for, for listeners and for our residents that, you know, this is a fait accompli, that if we don't do it, you know, it's like a, a bad decision. You know, when we talk about project delays and escalation costs associated with rising labor and material costs, that is never not true. As a matter of fact, we have rising costs every year in the city because we give our folk raises every year on our step plan. As the city grows, we're going to have to buy more fire engines. We're going to have to hire more folks. So rising costs is, is always the case, whether we do a bond or not. That's just the reality of, of the, if you're growing. Now, we wouldn't have these problems if we weren't a growing city. And then we said, we don't need any more sidewalks because we don't want to have any more people moving here if we were stagnant. So I, I don't want to create the impression, you're not doing this. I'm just saying for those watching this, listening to this discussion, that this bond somehow will, will inoculate us or address things that are always the case anyway, whether we're going to do a bond or not. And those are the decisions we have, you know, we have to make. Sometimes when you look at your debt situation, perhaps adding a penny or whatever half cent to the C I P, which I think we elected to do with sustainability and the, the equitable fund as opposed to a bond at that time, relative to the whole picture, sometimes might be the best way to go. Even taking into account rising costs, which are always rising, that's built into the picture. So I say that to say that the, 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 the money, the floating of debt in this, in these particular instances, I think is, is worthwhile. But I, I don't want to suggest to folk that we have to do this or else because of these situations, which are always the situations. We're going to have higher costs, not only in, in, with, relative to this, but our operational costs literally go up each year because of personnel and things. So we're always dealing with rising costs. Unless we're not growing, so that the cure for that is just shut Durham down or say, no more people can come. And we're not going to do that. So I'm excited about the project. You know, as I said, I, I have a sentimental connection to paving all of our roads. I do, I'm glad Councilmember Freeman brought up the, the equity issue. And I know that that's a lens that we're applying. You know, I don't want to see expedited projects, expedited delivery on projects that haven't been vetted through our equity lens, because historically, that's been the problem. Things have been expedited in certain neighborhoods and not in other neighborhoods. So thank you for all the work. I, other than, you know, addressing that framing thing and, and the importance of protecting our AAA bond rating. Anytime we float debt, we have to think about that capacity where we will not be able to use that in other areas. But I think these projects meet the test of, of being worth while floating debt. And yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for your great comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. Got a question. Looking at the sidewalk projects, some of them have federal funding attached to them. I'm just wondering if we were to not fund them, would we lose that federal funding in, in, for those specific projects? Or would that, or would that funding be reallocated?
I will let Director Egan address that one. So we're under very significant scrutiny through the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro MPO process, which is where we've gotten the awards of federal funding that you see for the sidewalks. We've had recent meetings. Councilmembers Riss and Caballero have been there where their colleagues are asking, why is the city holding on to this funding for projects that the city is not delivering? And there are timelines associated with delivery of these projects. And the longer that we wait without delivering the projects, the greater that risk is that the MPO can invoke those deadlines and recall that federal funding. So the, the longer we wait, the greater that risk is that we could lose that federal funding.
That's good to know. And, and some of these projects are in NCDOT right of way as well. Did we go to NCDOT and say, this is your right of way. You need to build us a sidewalk?
We work in partnership with NCDOT. NCDOT has a, an approach, what they call betterments. So if we want to improve, make better a state roadway, they look to the local government, the municipal government to sponsor the cost of a betterment. There's been, there's some discussion about a complete streets policy. And, but we, so far, our experience has been that where we, where we request betterments, whether that's a sidewalk or other improvement to the roadway, they look to the municipality to, to cover that cost.
Okay. One, one last question. As far as our investments, would there, is there any additional potential matching? Are there any potential matching grants out there that would give us more bang for the buck here?
So we are applying for some funding through the, the DCHC MPO process, but that's for trails projects. So the projects that you see here in the bond are not projects where that was requested. There are always competitive opportunities, but we have many needs. And so we have a priority framework for those competitive opportunities. One of the, the biggest opportunities that we have ahead of us is the Federal Safe Streets for All program. So they have a billion dollars available each year through the bipartisan infrastructure law. Right now, we are not qualified to apply for that capital funding through that project. We need to make some changes to our Vision Zero policy. And we need to have a Vision Zero action plan before we would be an eligible applicant for that funding. So we are working diligently to bring forward those updates so that when that cycle opens up again next year, that we can be an eligible applicant. And we're currently ineligible.
Okay. We think we can make those updates in time for, for next year?
Yeah, very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Um, I, it, it's, it's always, uh, we always want to do things, uh, especially things that we need to do, like constructing sidewalks, um, paving roads and building parks, because they're all necessary. Um, and they have a, a cost, a high cost associated with them. I am also supportive of, uh, of this path that's being presented to us and, and putting it in front of the voters so that they can make a decision. And I, I think, I think it's important stuff, important infrastructure, um, for, for us to be investing in. I also appreciate, uh, the points that were raised, uh, by the council members, uh, about complete streets and, and, uh, when we pave, when we build new streets and pave streets and construct sidewalks, that it is part of a, uh, complete cross section, um, that, uh, that moves, uh, multiple different users as, as safely as possible and in accordance with, with best practices. And also I'll just say, you know, I, I, I think this, this shows, and, and, uh, Councilmember Cook brought up the, the cost of sidewalk, just how important it is to capture incrementally when there is, um, development, um, capture that, that infrastructure at the time of development or reconstruction, um, uh, because that, that's an important part of, uh, being, being efficient, um, with, with our resources. So appreciate the work that's gone into this, um, and I will give things back to the mayor here.
If I could just add, I just want to say that I appreciate, um, some of the comments of my colleagues. I do want to point out that I think it was myself and Councilmember Caballero who were trying to push for that Vision Zero coordinator for a number of years to make sure that we were ahead. And, um, it's hard, hard hearing that we're now behind on that. And, um, I do want to say that, um, I, I wholeheartedly believe that we should do a referendum. I do want to make sure that it's the best referendum for the people, considering the amount of money we're talking about. And I do think that it's important to figure out whether or not the complete streets can be factored into those paved roads. I do think that we're, wherever there's opportunity as well, um, we've got to figure out how to make sure that our M W B E, um, resources are in place. And these are the type of things, these are the conversations that I like to see. And when I don't see them in the presentation, it makes me worry, um, that the staff is not talking about it or engaged in some work behind the scenes that will make sure that that comes to the forefront. I am not, um, I'm not going to say I'm supportive, but I will say that I'm, I'm okay. I think with the housing bond, I had the same issues, because there's things that we can do that actually make things better for more people in our community than, than just, um, contractors who come in from other states and other cities, um, to cover what we need. And so I just want to make sure that we're not losing that piece of this in the equity conversation, just knowing like our, there are plenty of women owned and minority owned businesses who could be involved in this conversation. But if they're not even a thought in our conversation, as we talk about a bond for, uh, eighty-five million or a hundred and ten or a hundred and sixteen million dollars, then I think it gets lost. And so I don't want to lose that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I, and just really quick, I, I know that these are projects that we're going to be delivering, uh, if it goes through. So I, I, to your concern, Councilmember Freeman, I, I would hope that the office on equity is included, um, with that, um, considering that it will have to go through. It's like, we're not outsourcing it, so we'll, for some of it, yeah, but it'll have our standards.
Well, I think it's important to note that there have been contracts that have come forward that said they couldn't find or they, they didn't meet. And so if we're not actively pursuing it, it kind of gets to the end and we're like, oh, we can't do it.
Got you.
That's all.
No, that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might say. Thank you. Um, I, I, I do want to, this, this particular discussion, and I do want to say in, in kind of defense of the staff, that the, the equity lens in terms of the ranking of our projects is now part of our culture. And, and that's reflected in the listing of these. The contract, if I agree with Councilmember Freeman, we, we need to maintain vigilance at the contractual stage when we're bringing in vendors. But this, what is before us now is reflective of an, of a culture of equity. And the staff does a great job in doing that. Just want to celebrate them on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would echo that as well. I think this staff does a great job, and I think it's really helpful to make sure that we keep saying it as well.
That's a beautiful moment.
We need that on our shirt. I just had a couple more questions. One is around like the tax increase, because with the Affordable Housing Bond, you know, essentially we're putting in front of the voters, you get these things if you say yes. And yes means your taxes are going up. So the Affordable Housing Bond, we delayed it because of the, of the pandemic. And it was also just, there wasn't the pressure. Uh, is there, if, if folks are seeing shifts partly around interest rates, right? If, if folks are seeing shifts on the finance side, like, hey, we think they're going to come down, will there be back to, back to council like there was, uh, with the Affordable Housing Bond, where it may not be to our benefit? Um, you know, if we hold out for one more year, whenever we decide, because of, of what's happening with broader economic.
So I, I would say my response to that is we don't try to really time the market, but there are other opportunities. So once we issue debt, there's always the option in the future to refund that debt and get for, go for, go for, if the tax rates go down, we refund it and then we, we generate savings on, on the tail end.
Okay, okay, thank you. This is what I want to make sure I want, because we all know that part of this is, is how we market this in, in a couple of months. And then that's to my second point, and this is really for our stakeholder community. The process is staff gets us the projects, they do the, the, the legal and technical pieces. Then it is up to, uh, other folks, not staff, to promote. Staff cannot promote it. So this is for our stake, we can promote it as elected officials, we can, we can do it. I just want to say for the Affordable Housing, uh, Bond, former Mayor Shul, there, there were yard signs and, and comm strategies and all kinds of things. And so this is a, this is a call out to our stakeholder communities who've come to us, uh, for many years, that it's going to have to be a lift outside of city staff to get approval in front of the voters in November twenty-four. So I am going ahead and stating that really loud and clear, um, because, uh, I think sometimes people forget that part when, when they come, well, we want a bond. Well, staff can get you so far, but then if people want it, there has to be a different strategy in, in front of voters. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you. This, this is exciting. And, and I, I'll, I'll start with, I, I'm glad to see that the convention center is not on there. Cause what was presented to us was without consideration of all of the public, the private interest in supporting us on it. So I personally wanted to put the need out there to make it very clear that every data point shows how badly we need a new convention center, but we just aren't ready for it yet. And I, I prefer waiting until we get more support, uh, to make sure this is a public private partnership. Uh, and then we'll take, you know, the appropriate steps at the appropriate time. I, I think many folks know how competitive I am. That's why I kept asking about the triple A, uh, credit rating. But in all seriousness, you know, tragically, you know, you saw just what happened in Baltimore. The city of Baltimore has a, a, a double A credit rating, and it's making it much more difficult in their rebuilding of the Key Bridge. You know, um, it's going to cost the residents in the state more. Of course, the state is helping them out with that, but just, that's just one example, um, that, you know, how it pays off that we are in this situation. Also, there are only thirty cities, I believe, about thirty something. Cities out of thirty thousand cities and towns across the nation that have a triple A credit bond rating that's identified by all three of the issuing agencies. And Durham is probably one of those. Uh, so we, we are in the best shape that we possibly can be. Once we, let's say this is passed in November, uh, if we, you know, put it on the ballot and it's actually passed. Are the, once it's set, I, and I'm glad that you just answered Councilmember Caballero's question around, you know, tax rate changing, changes of being able to refund. I was interested in that. But are there any other impacting factors that could, uh, deter, that could impact the actual calendar, the payoff, like, or do we just set it and just follow it, no matter the population change or, uh, rates?
Are, are you talking specifically to the tax rate? Or?
So let's say we, we do two hundred million. Our tax base expands, I don't know if these are related, but our, our tax base expands. We, in some perfect world, we covered our C I P and projects and, and more. Are we able to?
Adjust, yes. Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to say the word fluid, but it is sort of fluid. And as we grow, our, if our resources expand, our tax base expands, yes, we're able to make those adjustments.
Okay, that's good to know.
But through, a- as information that we would provide to the public, we, there are some ballot requirements for transparency. And so we would have to follow those transparency requirements in, in informing the public, um, from a staff perspective as to what that is. But the, the reality is, is yes, as we grow, tax base grows, we make adjustments based upon, on, on the forecast.
Gotcha.
And current conditions.
I, um, I, I'll just say quickly, the reason why I'm supportive, you know, it, one is just the comfort and quality of life. There is one store that a retail store, major retail store that I go, I can go to. And I've used this analogy before, but you get the carts and they're all, you know, bumpy or loose. They're, there's the lights in the store, just the dim fluorescent lights. And it's just, it doesn't feel good to be in there. But you go in there because it's, it's a retail store that has a little bit of everything. Then there's another retail store that's similar to it, and the, the lighting is bright. The carts, the suspension on the carts that you're pushing, it's just so much smoother. You go in the restroom, it has big mirrors and it's like, you want to look in the mirror, wow, I look nice today. It's just a different quality experience. I look at our streets the same. You know, when I'm in New York, you better be careful, uh, Middleton, when you're, 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 uh, driving in New York and the amount of money you're going to spend in getting your car realigned or tires replaced. But, you know, um, you know.
That's in the train.
It's just, you know, uh, but imagine if our streets were, were actually smoother ride on, you know? It just makes you want to be here. Imagine if you could just park your car and just walk everywhere you wanted to go. You know, it makes you want to be here. Um, and so I, I just, I think about it in that, that instance. And the other, I just look at the economic benefit of parks. Uh, and I keep going back to, you know, I, I'm finding myself calling Raleigh the Park City, because they keep doing parking bond, park bonds every other year, you know? And, and they're out doing us on parks, I give that up, all right? But not for long. Um, I think this is a really good start. And I also know that just through our C I P process, it takes forever to get anything done. And this is an opportunity for us to really invest in an area of our city that is desperately needed. I also know that when you, uh, invest in the parks, what comes with that is, you know, just, uh, uh, you know, a more, building a community is friendlier to our climate. You know, we're going to have trees out there, we're going to plant more trees, you know? We're gonna, it's gonna bring housing, it's gonna bring investment, it's gonna bring businesses around it. People are going to want to be around it. And I hope that we can focus more on revitalizing communities rather than just replacing communities, which would be displacement to folks that are there. Uh, so we have a chance to get so many things right with this. And I look forward to being a, a, a big cheerleader on this, um, a- as, as we move forward. So I, I'm excited about it. And it's, I can't wait to see kids out playing in the pool and learning how to swim, uh, having just another pool that we can get access to. And where we're looking to have in this one, we, we don't have anything over there. So this is, this is exciting. I'll be supporting it.
Great. Well, thank you. I think I have clear direction, uh, and I believe you'll be seeing an agenda memo on this, uh, in kind of an upcoming cycle.
Just one additional question. If it, if it is at all possible, I, I was just noting that there was about nineteen miles of unpaid roads. If it was possible to see a price tag on that or complete streets, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thirteen point two miles.
I, I think nineteen was the original. I think it's thirteen point three left to pave. And then I think we've got two and a half miles that are on the, yeah. There's two and a half miles that are, I think, scheduled program for this summer, be taken care of. And so, so the number is already shrinking, but you, you want the balance of what it would cost to finish it? Yes.
Thirteen point three.
Okay.
Yep. And I, and I, I'm not pitching any specific company, but we do have a company right here in Durham that, uh, they, they actually make concrete that is eco-friendly. And it's, uh, much, yeah, it's much friendlier to our environment. So, um, I, I hope that companies that will be taking on these contracts can consider that, building, uh, utilizing bio-friendly, uh, or eco-friendly, uh, concrete. All right, can I get just an official thumbs up for direction? If you are in favor of, so giving the staff direction? All right, we have six and a half. All right. All right. Thank you.